Today's session will be led by Tara. And I'm very interested to hear what she's going to be updating us with, with regards to the Electricity Regulation Amendment Bill. And we will have time for questions. So if during the presentation, some questions come up for you, you can make a note and then when we have the moment for questions, you can raise your hand. As keeping notes, we request that you keep your microphone muted at all times. And also that you keep your video off. It's quite distracting if there's only like one or two videos popping up. So that would be great. When we have time for questions, if you'd like to put your video on at that time, then you can do that. Also, for people that have just joined, please will you write your name and organization in the chat? I see we already have a question. Are you, Anzuko, would you like to? Anzuzo, would you like to raise or ask a question? Or are you just familiarizing yourself with the hand raising? Okay, if you have a question, you can also put it in the chat. I'll keep an eye on it. Great, all right. So from this point, I will hand over to Tara.
So good morning, everyone. I am going to put it on my video, but if the connection becomes too bad, I switch it off. But it's nice to be able to see the person's face that is giving you this information. So today, we actually have a couple of faith leaders who are SAFCE faith leaders and not only, we're not only, our audience is not only limited to the Rural Action for Climate Resilience project. So just a welcome to those who are SAFCE faith leaders, but not affiliated to the RESA project. Thanks for joining as well. And yeah, before we get into the details, I just want to give you a sort of, yeah, put it out there that I'm not an expert on electricity. And you know, I've just spent a lot of time reading these bills and I'm trying to give you what I have gathered from my research. But I am by no means an expert. So how I'm going to structure this is we are going to go through a little bit of a background on electricity regulations in South Africa. In particular, the Electricity Regulation Act of 2006, which the bill that we're talking about is an amendment to. And then talk a little bit about what the implications are of the amendments. And then I want to open it up for a discussion where I would be interested to hear from all of you, in particular, what your concerns would be. And also we'll have some time to just brief you a little bit about the provincial public hearings which are ongoing at the moment. They've just started today in the northwest and they've completed in Limpopo and Malanga. So yeah, without further ado, let me get into the depths of this presentation. So as I said, this amendment bill is focusing on amending the Electricity Regulation Act of 2006, which outlines the regulatory framework for the electricity industry in South Africa. It in particular outlines the powers and roles of the National Energy Regulator of South Africa, which is essentially the body that is responsible for issuing licenses for electricity generation, for transmission, distribution, import and export as well of electricity. And the amendment bill, if it is passed, will essentially amend this act of 2006. So it'll become legally enforced, enforceable. And there was one more amendment that was passed, a previous amendment that was passed in 2007, 2008. And there was also an amendment that you might have come across, or not an amendment, but it's the Schedule II of the Electricity Regulation Act in 2021 was amended and gazetted to basically lift the ceiling of where you need to apply for a license. And this was done because of the energy crisis that we were in and all still are in. But essentially it raised, it made it easier for you to get, to start generating energy and put it into the grid without requiring a license. So if you were producing, if you had a capacity of up to 100 kilowatts, you don't need any registration or any license. And up until 100 megawatts of capacity, all you need to do is be registered with NERSA. You don't need a license. So that Schedule II was passed in 2021. And essentially what this amendment bill is trying to do is make the rest of the bill make sense or be coherent with that change in Schedule II of the act around the licensing. So just in terms of like a bit of a timeline, in February last year, it was first published for comment. The comment period closed in March. Then it went, the bill went to parliament. And then the parliament's in May last year, Parliament's Bull Office requested the bill to be sent to the Office of Chief State for final certification. And then this year in August, it was finally certified and submitted to the Parliament's Bull's Office. And now it's going through the provincial public hearings that I mentioned. So this is like, you have these, you have four different types of bills usually. And this is what they call a Section 76 bill, which is like an ordinary bill, which means that essentially like it goes through National Assembly and then it goes through this provincial process where each member of the National Council of Provinces has to vote on, as they don't get an independent vote. Each of these members of the National Council of Provinces, they have to vote as the entire provincial delegation. In other words, each province gets one vote on this bill. So that's what, what the provincial public hearings now are leading into. So they will, based on the public hearings, the National Council of Provinces will, you know, that will inform the positions that the provincial delegations take around, you know, passing the bill, amending the bill, rejecting it. But there is also, I mean, you know, there is the possibility that the National Assembly can override the National Council of Provinces' decisions on this if the National Assembly is able to get a two-thirds majority on, within its members against whatever direction the National Council of Province takes. So that's just like a little bit of a constitutional, I guess, background. Some of you probably know this already and it's familiar. For others, it might be new information. And so I think it's just important to understand what, like what's the role of the public in this process currently ongoing in terms of the public hearing? What is that role? The role of the public is to inform the provincial delegations and their sort of assessment of this bill. So then getting more into the technicalities of what we're dealing with in this bill. We're talking about the electricity sector in South Africa, right? And currently, the electricity sector is monopolized by Escom, which is a state-owned entity, right? They have a monopoly over generation, transmission and the distribution of energy. And what Escom does, like on top of all of that, is they manage the grid, right? On the left here, you see this picture, that's our current grid. And grid system, basically how the energy is sort of distributed around the country. And you know, it's an interesting picture to look at because I think it also talks about, you know, when we're thinking about renewable energy coming onboard onto the grid, where can it actually come onboard? You can see we've, people often talk about how the Northern Cape in particular is like well positioned for solar energy generation. But you can see that the grid in the Northern Cape is pretty sparse. So there's going to have to be quite a lot of investment into the grid, into expanding the grid so that it can actually even access these points of renewable energy, these new points of renewable energy generation. So what Escom does currently is they also manage the grid. So they, they basically ensure that we have a stable supply of energy that matches the demand. And because we're currently not generating nationally enough energy, load shedding is actually quite a sophisticated approach to managing this. You know, so, because if you have more demand than there is supply and the grid is still active, you end up with the grid basically tripping. And that could lead to the entire country not having electricity. And then it takes, you know, a significant amount of time to actually turn, be able to bring the grid back up to be active again. So this happened, if you were following the news, in Nigeria and has happened in Nigeria a couple of times in the past year. And yeah, essentially, load shedding is part of the management to protect our grid in the, in the current situation where we aren't generating enough energy to supply the entire grid at one point of time. So that's, that's sort of the background on, you know, Escom and the kind of technical side of things. But there's also something to bear in mind in terms of Escom and it's the kind of crisis that it's in that kind of led up to load shedding in the first place, right? So a lot of the reasons that we have load shedding are due to mismanagement of our energy generation infrastructure. And Escom has been in a crisis of corruption and state capture. And in particular, this crisis of debt non-payment. So earlier this year, the government released this, this debt relief package for Escom to deal with its high levels of debt and its debt non-payment. But one of the conditions of this debt relief package is that they can't build any new generation in the next three years, which means that Escom, Escom basically can't build renewable energy generation facilities in the next year, three years. I mentioned Schedule II of the ERA earlier around the amending of the, and then the lifting of the limits for license requirements for generation, in particular for independent power producers, so private generation. And this kind of coincides with that debt relief package thing, right? So that now you have a situation where the state-owned entity cannot build, cannot invest in renewable, in building new renewable energy infrastructure. And so the approach is to then rely on the private sector to invest in renewable energy generation facilities. Another thing to bear in mind is that over 80% of our electricity comes from coal. It's responsible for our really high levels of carbon emissions on the African continent. I've mentioned this in previous presentations that I've done for some of you. But South Africa is responsible for half of the emissions of the African continent, right? That's like a significant amount relative to our economy size. And that's because our electricity is coming from coal. And then we had that evening at the Learning Festival on the Just Energy Transition Partnership. And we sort of, I'm hoping that you'll remember the basis of that concept. But essentially that's the, that partnership investment plan, the Just Energy Transition Partnership Investment Plan, is basically is contingent on the unbundling of Escom. And when we say the unbundling of Escom, this means the separation of Escom into a facility that's responsible for generation, a facility that's responsible for transition and a facility that's responsible for distribution. So these are, this is all, this is all just background so that you have sort of enough of an understanding in order to understand what the implications are of the key points that are in the amendment. So what does the amendment bill actually outline? So it's providing for additional electricity, new generation capacity and electricity infrastructure to come onto the grid. And in particular, they're talking here about private sector, right? Because remember what we said about the barrier against Escom investing in new generation facilities. So they're talking about providing for additional electricity, new generation capacity and electricity infrastructure within the private sector and clarifying on those licensing requirements that I mentioned earlier. The other thing that it is doing is providing for the establishment's duties, powers and functions of the transmission system operator, state-owned company. So this is what I'm talking about in terms of unbundling, right? This, now they are separating Escom into, this is the first kind of official legal step towards, you know, recognizing the transmission system operator as a separate entity. And yeah, so that's, that's, this is like a really tangible step towards the unbundling of Escom. It's providing for an open market platform that's going to allow for competitive electricity trading. What they mean by this is that they're going to be getting private, different private electricity generating facilities onboard. And these different private electricity generators are all going to be competing in terms of at what price they're going to be selling their electricity. So if you have five different people producing energy in, say, for example, the Nelson Mandela Bay Area, now those five companies are going to have to compete for, you know, for customers in order to sell their energy. They're going to be, there's going to be people who are going to be obviously just making a decision based on what the different costs are that people are selling their electricity for. So they're going to be, the different companies will be competing against each other. So the next point is that they're going to be assigning the duties, powers and functions of the transmission system operator to the national transmission company of South Africa. So this is essentially what that means is that although energy generation is going to be an open market situation, the transmission system, so the grid, is still going to be nationally, at least in this current format of the bill. And then the other thing that it is doing is that it revises the roles and the powers of NERSA, the National Energy Regulator. And now it's, NERSA is basically, instead of setting prices, they're going to be providing more of a facilitation role and oversight role to transition in particular to a competitive market for electricity generation. Okay, so a lot of different points, potentially a little bit technical. But what, what are the significance, what is the significance of these amendments? So it paves, as I mentioned, paves the way for the unbundling of Escom into three divisions, generation, transmission and distribution. And of course, with that comes, I guess, labor implications for Escom employees. There likely to be labor cuts and job losses with, from, within the labor, the Escom labor force. I think another thing that it's indicative of is it's representing the government's response to the ongoing energy crisis. So it's moving away from state ownership towards a market model. So a market-run kind of competitive model. And it's moving towards basically the marketization of our electricity sector and, and probably the privatization of the law, of large sections of our energy generation sector in particular. Kind of whether we'll end up, it's unlikely that we're going to end up with the privatization of the, of the transmission company in the future because there's not really the opportunity to, to generate profits from the grid. The grid is really something that is essentially about the public good. It's not really something that is profitable. Or at least that's what people that I have been speaking to have been saying. But yeah, it is, does represent this, this trend towards the privatizing of our, in particular, our energy generation side of things. And then the other thing that these amendments are doing is that they are essentially protecting the private producers, so the independent power producers. They're protecting them from being discriminated against in terms of accessing the grid for the transmission and the distribution of the energy that they generate. And that's, those sort of amendments are intended to ensure that this competitive market that I was talking about for energy generation actually works. And then, as I mentioned earlier, now, you know, NERSA previously would set prices and tariffs. They also had, you know, other, other roles that they were supposed to fulfill, but have historically not been very good at fulfilling these. So now they have a slightly different role. They're not, because it's an open market now, they're not going to be regulating prices anymore. They're not going to be setting the prices. They're going to, they will still set tariffs. But yeah, they, they are not going to be regulating the prices as in the way that they previously did. And now they'll be more playing a role of overseeing disputes that might occur between customers and, and generators of electricity or the generators of electricity and the transmission company, for example. If the transmission, this national transmission company now is like, oh no, I don't want to provide this company access to the grid, but I'm going to provide this company access to the grid. You know, those kinds of contestations that are likely to happen when you start to open up the market now to far more different energy generators, rather than just having Escom being the primary monopoly in the, in the room. So I think this is now really the meat of the presentation. So if you haven't paid attention up until now, it's fine. This is the point that you want to be paying attention to. So what is the significance of these proposed amendments? It's creating an enabling environment for the private sector to get into independent renewable energy generation, which has already been a thing, right? It's already been, been part of our, you know, we've had small independent power producers coming onto the grid since that Schedule II lifting of licensing limitations. And, and the way that it's framed is that it has the potential to bring, to bring more energy onto the grid and to address, potentially address load shedding, which of course, if you're taking like a, like an economic argument, load shedding has had significant impact on our economy. There are also other implications of load shedding, right? It's impacted all of our lives in, to varying degrees. But there's also a lot of uncertainty with these amendments. And I think this is where it's important that we are present in these public hearings to get answers on this uncertainty and to sort of generate a conversation and to push back a little bit. So what are the main concerns? Or what are the main things that we are uncertain of? So firstly, there's no protection of the poor in these amendments. Already electricity is incredibly expensive. And in a competitive market, there's no guarantee that the cost of electricity is going to go down. So you might have people competing with each other, but that doesn't mean that the baseline cost of electricity is going to be any less than it already is. So what really is the point of an end to load shedding if we have no guarantee that electricity is going to still be affordable, right? Because then that, you're ending load shedding for the wealthy, but you're not really having an impact on whether the majority of the country is able to access or afford electricity. So that's one really big point and concern that I think all of us need to be asking in these, in these public hearings. The second thing is unbundling Escom into something that is, into three companies where you have one that's focused on transmission, one that's focused on generation and one that's focused on distribution. It doesn't necessarily address the problems that got us to this point in the first place, which were Escom's debt, which was linked to Escom's corruption. So there's a lot of uncertainty around what are the implications for Escom's debt? Where is it going to go? Who's going to be paying for it? And, and also what are the, what is going to be put in place to address the levels of corruption that are already in Escom? Are we going to end up, are we just going to ignore the fact that Escom has all this corruption and just assume that the private sector is going to come in and save the day? I mean, it might provide electricity access for, for the few, for the elite, for the big businesses. We who are, you know, reliant on more affordable electricity prices are, you know, unlikely to, to benefit from that in the same way. And so are more reliant on a state-owned entity that can, can sort of absorb the costs of electricity. You know, we're more reliant on that to be functional. And so the fact that there aren't any conversations or ways to address corruption in particular is a bit of a concern. And then the other thing that, that is, is a danger is the fact that if we do unbundle into these three different, you know, company, like state-owned companies, Escom Generation, Transmission and Distribution. And if, so there are two things, two dangers around Escom Generation. So depending on where the debt goes, if the debt is ending up being the responsibility of Escom Generation, then that's obviously putting a lot of, of weight on Escom Generation as a state-owned entity. And the other thing is that Escom Generation cannot ask for any more money from the government for the next three years to build new generation infrastructure. So those two points make us concerned about whether Escom Generation is going to be able to continue functioning in the near future. And the reality is that sure, we're creating a regulatory environment that enables private renewable energy generation to come onboard. But the rates, there's no guarantee that that rate is going to be fast enough to meet our demand for electricity. So what we might end up having is that Escom Generation now doesn't have enough support from the government, is taking over to do new build and is taking on potentially all of Escom's debt. So we might end up with Escom Generation failing. And if Escom Generation fails, that's a serious issue for all of us because in the near future, we are realistically still going to be dependent on our current Escom Generation fleet until until uh there's enough alternative energy on the grid to provide for alternatives. And uh essentially, this is just opening up, this amendment is just opening up to the market, assuming that that is going to um in a sort of unregulated way, just come in and generate enough uh electricity, just because there is a demand for electricity. Uh, and really, there's no guarantee that that is actually going to happen at the rate that we needed to. Um. Uh, yeah. The other question is around what's going to happen around uh free basic uh electricity allocations. Um. If you are having now all these different electricity generators competing for costs, how is National Treasury going to be uh allocating equitable shares? Uh, what what happens to municipal revenues? Um, eh, that are made from the selling of electricity. Uh, and and does, is now municipal generation going to be more of a a part of our um, uh of our energy landscape moving forward? And um, and finally, there are concerns about Neersa's capabilities as an independent regulator. Um. There is, although in this bill, Neersa will will be able to set tariffs, there's a question around, are they going to be setting tariffs differently for businesses and for consumers? Um. Historically, Neersa, you know, for example, National was supposed to be responsible um for implementing the National Government's Electricity Policy Framework and the Integrated Resource Plan, as well as as the Electricity Regulation Act. And and they have expressed their inability to practically implement this provision. So this has now been deleted from from the from the act. And and I, you know, there are other things that they've they've expressed their inability to practically implement, like controlling prices of electricity. Um. So there are concerns about whether Neersa really has um the capabilities to act as an independent regulator. And also because of their long ties with Escom, are they going to be really as independent? Um, or will they be really an extension of of old Escom as well? Um. So these are a lot of different concerns and uh thoughts that have been raised around this bill. Um, I think in particular, the con- the concern for me is around uh the the fact that there isn't really protection for poor uh and that there's no guarantee that the cost of electricity is going to go down. So even if we're ending load shedding, we might only be ending load shedding for the for the private sector. Um. And and are there other ways that we could be addressing this in terms of rather addressing the corruption in Escom? Um, uh, and, you know, looking at uh cutting the, cutting the salaries of the the, you know, the top Escom officials that haven't really been clearly doing their their role of managing Escom uh to the level that it is required. So, um, you know, these are, these are sort of thoughts from from what I have heard um and engaged with, from reading the different bills and the amendments. Um. Yeah, by no means exhaustive. Um, so now I just want to be, get to finally um, the the point around the public provincial hearings. So this specifically applies to participants who are a part of the Rural Action for Climate Resilience project, the RESA project. We um are able to support you uh with transport and depending on how far uh you have to travel with uh with accommodation costs um to attend public provincial hearings. And and these are the, this is the list of 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 public provincial hearings that are relevant to the Northern Cape, Eastern Cape and Western Cape. Um. As I said, Limpopo and Pumalanga have been completed. Um, and uh currently ongoing are the the hearings for the Northwest. There, yeah, um, the the most, I guess, if you are wanting to plan ahead to attend these, the the most, I guess, the most pressing would be for those who are located in the Northern Cape. Um. Because those hearings are beginning on the second of November. Um, so you can hear, you can see here at like the 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 district municipality, the local mu- uh municipality that the hearing will be in, and then the specific location. The the parliamentary uh media alerts will release specifically where um in the the different locations, uh in terms of like the venue, they usually release that information the day before. Um, so I don't have the the specific venues, I just have the 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 towns or cities that the the hearings are happening in. But you can see that, yeah, Northern Cape is the the hearings are running from the second to the fifth of November. We ha- it's, they're happening in Kimberley, Kuruman, Deard and Uppington. Then Eastern Cape, it's the sixteenth to the nineteenth of November, and they're happening in Matatial, Umtata, um, Cradock, Queenstown and then Abeka. And then in Western Cape, it's from the thirtieth of November to the the third of December. And they're happening in Bothwell West, Worcester, Hansby and Citrus Tal. Um. Yeah, so these are, these are where you can go and and participate and have your say um and just be a part of the conversation. Um. And we really would encourage you to be a part of uh of these hearings because yeah, this is, this is something that is going to impact all of us. It's it's uh, you know, the cost of electricity is not just going to impact how much money we spend on on our own electricity, but it'll also impact things like the cost of food, for example, um, or uh, you know, the cost of of running a business. Um. And um, so all of these things, you know, it's 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 gonna have implications for all of us um and overall uh increase in the cost of living. So, that was a bit of a whirlwind. Um. But I hope that it was, it was useful. I'm gonna stop my video and stop sharing now and open up for a little bit of a, a discussion. Um, and, yeah. Would be interested to hear what what your thoughts are on the bill, uh on what I shared so far. Um. And just, yeah, what, whe- whether you feel like you would be interested in attending these hearings. Um. Yeah, open, open to hear from any of you. Hi, Nobuniso. Go for it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, 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 hi to everyone, yes. Uh, also, um, although I'm joining you late because of network, nee bad. I'm interested to, to 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 join this um outreach uh uh program here in Eastern Cape. Um, Tata is nearer us, especially when we are going to assist us with the with the transport cost because uh there is no need of accommodation for us. I think I will go through with the for uh uh hoping that you will send this presentation to us so that we can go through all of it so that we can have the 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 way.
You muted yourself, but I think I, I think I got your point. Yeah, I'll send, I'll share the presentation uh with everyone. Um. I don't know if you wanted to say anything more. Uh, you've just, you've muted yourself. Nobuniso, uh, or were you done?
Yes.
Yes, I can, I can hear you. Wait, uh, so you just want, you want me to share the presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Presentation because really, um, i- i- it will be useful for us to go to these um areas that they are going to 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 present this to, and also I I want to uh to acknowledge this information so that we will now you give us information so that we can have um information to discuss in those uh sessions, you know. Otherwise, I'll I'll, we will attend at M TATA. We will attend at M TATA.
Okay, great. Thanks, Nobuniso. Uh, Tele.
Hi, very good morning. And just a huge thank you to Tora for um, the presentation that you've shared with us. And then just also to reiterate what Nobuniso has said, that I sincerely believe that we do need to, if we are able um represent at these meetings. Um, I've been attending some of the um Escom Public Safety Information Meetings at Kubaq. And it's very concerning for me to see how um, they, trying to think what's the English for it. Um, we say, uh, who the blank can word? I just want to show you the nice things.
Yeah, they put the blinders on.
So it's very important that we do get to these meetings again. Um, as Nobunisa said, that we appreciate the assistance uh with transportation. Um, another thing that I've noticed uh when government or Escom is doing these supposed public participation sessions, they sometimes do it in, you know, difficult to access um places, uh, you know, for the average person. And so, you know, we are saying that how are the poor gonna be fitting into the system? And so it's almost like even with where and when they have the meetings is in an exclusionary way. So for those of us that are able to attend, I definitely um encourage that we do so. Um, and yeah, even if we are able to do one or two, um, maybe they will um, you know, do a hybrid meeting. In my experience, that doesn't go very well. It's better to be there in person. Um, because there can always be, you know, technical difficulties or they don't pay attention to the people attending online. So, um. Yeah, just with regards to to those things. Um. Again, thank you, Tora, for an informative session. And um yeah, I look forward to receiving the presentation as well, to just go through it uh carefully. And I will, in the meantime, block off those dates on my calendar so that I can be sure to be available. See you soon. Bye.
Thank you so much, Tele. Um, and and just in terms of uh, so Longa, I see your hand, but I'll just, I just wanna say something quickly in response. Um, but uh, I think um, the other thing is that the ti- the timings haven't yet been uh been released. But up until now, they've all been uh at ten o'clock in the morning, which again, talking about like whether people can actually access, uh, you know, there's that's, there's another question there around um accessibility uh of these public hearings. Um, because if you're working and not able to take off time to go, uh, then you can't attend these. So, yeah, um, up until now, they they have all happened around ten in the morning. So that that's also something to bear in mind and in terms of planning your travel to these locations. Uh, so Longa, I saw your hand. Do you want to have in? So Longa, you are muted. I don't know if you um wanted to say something?
Hi, Tala.
Hi, Soonga. You raised your hand earlier.
Yes, 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 yes. No, I wanted clarity um regarding the Neersa. As far as um I heard from the eh, from the presentation here, you said that uh Neersa is no longer going to set the tariffs. But in my understanding is that um the tariffs and the and the price, because Neersa is going to be responsible for the price, if I got that correct. But as far as I know is that there's a relationship between the tariffs and and the price. So um, Neersa is basically um the organization that is going to ensure that the price affect the cost of the providing energy service and that consumers are treated fairly. So there's a relationship between the price and the tariffs in eh is complex actually, and it can vary depending on the energy sector and the country. But now my, I have a a concern um with the statement that um the Neersa is no longer going to set um the tariffs, but there's also a relationship, or maybe there's an an organization or an independent organization that is going to take over, and as or Neersa is going to to work with uh with that organization that is going to be responsible for the, for, to set the tariffs of the country. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Soonga. So maybe I wasn't clear on this. Um, so Neersa will still set tariffs, but they are not setting, they're no longer going to be setting any, so before they regulated prices, uh now they're no longer going to be doing that. They're just going to be setting uh the tariffs. Um, so I can, I can show you, um, let me just find the exact wording. Um. So it says in the, i- it says, remove the regulation of prices in section four A subsection two and provide for the regulator to set and approve tariffs. Section four A uh subsection two of the act provides for the regulator to regulate prices and tariffs. Um, the regulator has expressed that it had implementation difficulties in practically regulating prices. So I think this is confusing, and I I personally do find this confusing because there is obviously a correlation between prices and tariffs. Um, so, but I guess they can't uh, basically what they're saying is that, I guess, the the tariffs will be percent, probably percentages or like, you know, uh who will be, uh, you know, it will, it will be like brack- set by brackets or something that will be according to, you know, affordability. But um, they won't be able to regulate the prices anymore because the prices are going to be determined by this competitive market um on the electricity generation side of things. Does that make sense? I'm, I mean, it's a bit I'm not even sure I fully understand it myself, but that's what the, that I'm saying, I mean, the bill.
It does, yes, it does make sense to me, but I got confused there because there is a relationship between those. For me, I call that as if um Neersa is still going to.
Sorry, Soonga, I I, you cut out for a second. You said eh that Neersa is still going to, and then I I I lost you after that. Hmm, I don't know if it's, if it's just my side. I can't, I didn't, I missed. Can you all hear me?
Oh, I think it's my. Yes, I can.
Okay, uh, just, sorry, you you said that you got confused and then I I I I lo- lost you after that. Um.
Yes, yes, I was saying, um, I got confused because as far as I know is that um the price depended on the tariffs. So immediately the tariffs are increasing, that means the price is going to increase as well. So I got confused when they said that NASA will no longer set the tariffs.
Right, yeah.
Yes, that is, that is why I was asking, maybe there is um an independent uh organization that is going to set the tariffs. And then NASA is going to take over from decision that they made from that uh organization.
Yeah, so what, so what it's saying is that, no, that's not gonna be the case. Neersa will still be setting the tariffs, but um they're no longer going to be regulating the prices because the prices are going to be determined by the different energy companies producing, um, rather than being determined by Escom previously. Um, yeah. Uh, Eugene, I saw that you Uh, Eugene, I saw that you had open, uh, like unmuted yourself. Do you have something to say?
Yes, thanks, Tara. I'm just struggling now to raise my hand on this phone. Sorry to just barge in.
No, no problem.
Um, Tara, there's a, there's a myth or there's a strong view that um the grid will collapse uh in South Africa. And how true is that? Um, the second point, we as a bladder organization will be available to attend the public hearings. We'll also try to assist, um, the relevant NGOs works with us. Um, to make sure they are also attending hence we have our NGOs forums locally. So I will also share that with others because you know, there's a lack of public participation in the buffer. So sometimes public hearing are coming, but no one is attending, sometimes getting postponed. Or they do their own decision because of the community is not aware and they did not attend. And the issue of electricity is a problem in this community and it's a time bomb where. Uh, the the poor of the poorest will fight with the municipality. Um, because of the blockage of electricity and the electricity rate is now high. Remember the municipality, even though they are not direct uh sources to give electricity. But they have arrangements with the residents. Um, the residents are paying tariffs so that they can get electricity. Uh, and they are blocking the electricity and now. And as and the municipality is owing Escom, but the Escom is not closing the electricity for the municipality. But the municipality is closing for them, for the residents. Now there's a time bomb and we have seen some other municipalities where the residents are burning municipalities. Remember government introduced electricity as they stated in the constitution. Uh, that there must be access to electricity in housing and so forth. Now they've allowed people to use electricity. If now the electricity is not affordable and it's now a high rate for people to afford. What is going to happen i- i- in this i- i- in this country? The last uh point is when the Escom, um, there's no new build, when the Escom collapsed. What will happen in this country? I feel like with a serious challenge around um electricity. But our government doesn't really want to speak out. Um, thanks.
Thanks Eugene, um, for your, your questions. Um, so I'm trying to, uh, so the, the, let me just. Respond to the the first one, which was around the grid collapse. So I I've also heard this from different people, but I spoke to. Um, someone who has a bit more technical expertise uh in the preparation for this uh presentation. And essentially, they said that that South Africa has a pretty sophisticated uh management of the grid. And so, um, you know, and load shedding is part of that. So it's unlikely that the grid would collapse. Uh, that being said, you know, if Escom generation facilities. For some reason or another, uh, in a completely unmanaged way, uh, do uh no longer function. Um. For for various potential reasons, then yeah, I mean, I think that 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 could be a possibility, but I think. As long as we have competent uh entity managing the grid. Which it it seems is going to be the responsibility of this new transmission system operator. Uh, I think we, we can be, um, you know, uh. Hopeful that that's not going to, we're not gonna go like down the the path of Nigeria. Uh, uh, in terms of, so your second point was on, on, yeah, what happens if Escom is not. Uh, you know, given enough. Uh, support financially and and the kind of unaffordable cost of energy, despite the fact that it's a constitutional right. Um, yeah, this, this is, this is definitely something. That is a concern and has been a concern and remains a concern even after these amendments because. Um, yeah, like even in their social economic impact assessment for this bill, it's. It's one of the costs that they talk about is the fact that the costs are being transferred onto the consumers. So the costs, the ability for for the independent power producers to generate profit. Or the ability for Escom generation to to address um. Or current, i- in the past, it's been the ability for Escom generation to address its debt. Those costs are passed down to the the end user, the end consumer of of electricity. So these are, these are definite concerns um on, on uh. On the cost of electricity in the past and also going forward. And and then your third point, I didn't manage to catch uh to write down, um. So I, if you can write it in the chat, then I'll, I'll, um. I'll respond to it, but um just give maybe, who do we have from Selda today? Um, I see you, I see the hand, so.
Hi, good morning, good morning. You've got Washeela of Selda.
Hi, hi, Washeela.
Tara, uh, um, yes, I've just got one or one comment and one question. Um, I do agree with what Eugene said here because. Um, in our municipality, we've got the same problem. The people is blocking the electricity. So if you don't pay your municipal account, they block your electricity. And then the other thing is what they do if you are in the reals. They say for instance, you buy a hundred rand electricity, then you only get um sixty rand worth. The others is going on your municipal account. I want to know, is that, is it, i- is 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 that even fair? Is it, is it right? Is it permissible for them to do that? Because the people here in our community, most of them are um. All pay beneficiaries, they struggle. So um, what can we do? I know that going to the meeting will be um a great advance for our community. But like I heard, the Western Cape one is in Bofud West and it's very far from where we are staying. But is there any foot that we can stand on in terms of this um? Where they take your, your, your electricity and um put it on your municipal account? I just want to know if it is permissible for them to do that. Thank you.
So um, from what I understand, uh, this is kind of part of the way. That our electricity pricing is structured, that it is being, the costs are finally borne. By um the consumer and it then, I think it's, it's very municipal dependent. Uh, in terms of your local tariff structures. Um, but I'm not, yeah, I I don't have enough um expertise to really say more than that. Um, what I do think you could raise is, um, yeah, the fact that, that, you know, this, this is. But there needs to be, um, I think this was a point that was raised by other. In other public hearing, pu- public provincial hearings, that there needs to be different. Like the tariff system needs to be uh cognizant of these different uh brackets. Um, and 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 really needs to be cognizant of of ensuring affordability and accessibility. Um, to to electricity for those who are most vulnerable. Uh, I do think, um, I'm trying to find it in in my notes, but there was something. On the, on having some kind of a support program. In particular, because this is a big part of Escom's debt, right? Coming from um, from municipal nonpa- like out non-payment of uh their. Of the municipal electricity. Uh, yeah, bill. Uh, so and and I don't know if it was in the bill or whether it was in an article. But this, there was conversations that I uh came across around the need to have. Um, kind of municipal, support for municipalities who have outstanding. Uh, electricity bill payments. So, but I I I'm, I'll look into that and get back to you, Washeela. Um, I'll post it in the, in the WhatsApp uh group after this, when I've, when I've gotten the information. Um. Yeah, okay, any other? Other points, uh, concerns? Um. Questions or even just expressions of interest to attend the. Uh, uh, public provincial hearings. Oh, that reminds me, um. Washeela, the public provincial hearings are not, in Western Cape are not just in Bofud West. I I don't know, uh, when I shared that screen, um. Uh, about with, I'll, I'll reshare in the, in the, in the WhatsApp group. But in the Western Cape, they're happening in Bofud West, Wuster, Khanspai and Citristal. So I don't know if any of those potentially, there might be, maybe, I don't know. And one of those four might be uh closer to you. Um. But yeah, uh, Telle, I see your hand.
Yes, thanks, Tara. Now, just to that point of, you know, it's not just Bofud West. It's also Khanspai, Citristal, Wuster. I mean, it's, um, it's a bit laughable at just how. Far away um these things are, but that's why I was saying to you, um. Yeah, I'm definitely willing to make myself available. Um, and make sure to get out there because in the community where I live here on the Cape flats. Many of these people have never even. Been out of this area. Some of them for three generations have just been within one. Um, neighborhood block. They've never even left that. So. Um, yeah, just to highlight the fact that for those of us that are able to stand in the gap. For others who aren't able to, it's really important. Um, even if we have to drive for two or three hours. Um, to get to where these meetings are. I remember when I used to live in N'popo. And my husband used to be involved in social development. And very often, you know, a a five-hour trip for an hour meeting. Um, was just the norm. So that's the kinds of things that I think in the Western Cape particularly, we also just need to um. Normalize a bit more is that, yes, we do need to travel more than twenty minutes to get somewhere sometime.
Yeah, I think, and also, um, uh, so I think. Uh, we, Telle, I I'm gonna chat to you separately because I think um. We'll need to uh figure out the SFC specific um. Funding for you to to attend, uh, but we can chat separately after this. Um, Karen, I see your uh hand.
Yeah, thanks so much, Tara, um, for this really great session. Um, sorry if I missed it, um, but I was just wondering, is there anything in the bill? That would have an impact, uh, well, I guess a general impact, yes, of course. But I guess I'm just wondering about, you know, the the importance of trying to facilitate um more community ownership. Um, of grids and of generation capacity. And I'm, yeah, I mean, my senses, you know, it kind of sets the field. But it doesn't really set any intention in relation to. Who do we want to um own these assets? And and I'm just wondering, yeah, like, is that an accurate sense? And I mean, is there space for an issue like this to be addressed? Is it something that we would want?
Yeah, uh, I think that's a, that's an interesting um, uh, point. Uh, there, so there's no, there, there's no, it's very much towards private sector uh ownership. Um, uh, and that, but that being said, I guess, um. And and the, and and also in this way, the the grid will remain state-owned. So so there's no kind of, uh, yeah, opportunity for that. That being said, they are, they do talk about, um, you know, the potential role of microgrids that are kind of. Uh, I guess either disconnected from the national grid um in rural areas where you, you don't have um. The possibility or the infrastructure hasn't yet uh become available to connect to the, to the national grid. So they they talk about that in their social economic impact assessment. Uh, as you know, that this bill potentially enables that. I think more than this bill um in terms. Yeah, I mean, I I think that, like, if you, if you have, eh, if you have an organized community. Group that is able to have sufficient funds to to be, um, you know, a. To 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 be able to compete with private sector, uh, then in theory, they, you know, they, now they're these licensed. Uh, lifting, the liftings of of licenses, but I think in practice. Uh, the regulatory environment is not exactly conducive to that. Uh, like if you don't have a lot of expendable funds, um, it's, it's like, yeah, you s-. There, there's this, one of the few examples of a community. Owned uh energy cooperative is this Saltuba Cooperative in Obeka. And they have been, you know, since the, since the schedule, schedule two amendment. They've been putting energy into the grid, but it's taken so long for them to actually get. Uh, money for the energy that they've been putting into it. Um, from, from Nelson Mandela Bay Municipality. So so it's sort of like, do you as a community-based organization with probably limited. Access to funds, do you have the capability to absorb those kinds of costs in the long run without external support? Um, and I think hugely the answer is no. So uh, I guess that's a long-winded way of saying that I. It like, one could argue that this makes it easy for anyone who's not Escom to participate. But in practice, in reality, it's much more geared towards enabling the private sector to come into the energy generation space. Um, I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Great, um, I, we have fifteen more minutes uh on this call, but I. I don't know if there are any last questions. Maybe, maybe just before we end, we could have a, um. We could have a, a, just a, a show of hands or maybe comment in the chat if you're. If you're thinking of attending, some of you have mentioned already that you might be interested in attending. Public provincial hearings, um, but it would be, yeah, it would be good to get. A bit more of uh insight into how many of you attending this call will be at the, at the hearings. Um, so, yeah, just feel free to unmute yourself and let us know. So, yeah, Telle, I know, Nombuniso, I assume Soonga is gonna be going. Um, who else? Eugene, Washeela, um. But any, anyone else planning on attending? Uh, let me actually, while I'm asking that. Uh, put this slide up again. Um. So here we go, here we have the, um. The, uh, so you can see that Northern Cape, those of you. Sophia, I don't know if you are in in interested in attending the public hearings. Uh, but the Northern Cape, those ones, we, we need to be, uh, you know, figuring out the details of. Um, assisting you. Uh. As soon as possible because those hearings start on the second of November. Uh, uh, and yeah, you you would go to one of the four. So either Kimberley, Kuruman, the R or Apektan. Um, so, uh, and then Eastern Cape. We have Matatiel on the sixteenth of November, Tata on the seventeenth of November. Kadok Queenstown uh on the eighteenth of November and Obeka on the nineteenth. And then Western Cape, we have Bofud West on the thirtieth of November, Wuster on the first. And then Western Cape, we have Bothaford West on the thirtieth of November, Wuster on the first of December, Khanspai on the second of December and Citristal on the third of December. Uh, so I see some people have put up their hands, Asindiswa, Yamkeela. Do you want to come in or is that, are those just eh, hands raised to say that you will be attending? Okay, I assume, eh, eh, and Nonzuzo, you unmuted yourself, is that eh, say that you'll be attending as well?
Yes.
Great, great.
Yes, Tara, I think I'll also be, um, attending, um, first years. I'm looking at the dates sixteen and seventeen, the only one that I can be able to attend is the one for nineteen.
Okay, I mean, I was thinking also for Herschel, uh, I mean, one possibility, it's, it's, it's I guess not ideal, but you could also go to Bloemfontein if that's closer, on the tenth of November. Uh, but then you would be part of the, then your voice would be included into the Free State. Um, once, I think it's probably better to stay, uh, in the Eastern Cape uh, here, provincial hearing, so that people don't say, oh, no, you're coming from outside, your voice is not relevant here. Um.
Yes, 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 uh, uh, yes, I didn't realize that Bloemfontein is also in the list. But I have no problem to attend in Bloemfontein.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes.
Um, but then, yeah, just, yeah, like I said, it's just, uh, um, just beware that people might be like, oh, yeah, you're coming from Eastern Cape, but now you want to be here for the Free State hearings. Uh, Yamkeela.
Tara, I just need, I just wanna know, um, Tata is closer to me, but, but then it's in the, I've, uh, it's in the, what's it called? Or Tamwet district, and then Matatiel is more far away from me, but then it's in the Alfred, Alfred's district. So is it compulsory to attend, um, where your district is?
No, because it's, it's provincial, so it doesn't, so long as you make it to, uh, to, um, to one of them in the province, it doesn't really matter which one you're going to. Uh, I think the, the question is, is more for, for Herschel because uh, it's technically Herschel is located in the Eastern Cape, but if Soonga was to go to the Free State for the Bloemfontein, uh, hearing, then he would be, you know, he'd be representing a non-free state opinion on the bill. Uh, and, and this kind of ties into what I was saying earlier, because these hearings are going to inform what the provincial vote is, and because each province just gets one vote on the bill. Um, I guess, yeah, they could, they could be people who are, who say, oh, you know, you can't be coming from a different province and, and saying that you want to, uh, do things in a certain way, uh, in a different province, because then you're influencing the vote uh, that that province makes. But I think that's not, not really so much of an issue. I think it shouldn't be a, a problem. Uh, Sindiswa, you have your, your hand up. Do you want to say something?
Good morning, everyone, um.
Morning.
I was, I was raising my hand to go to the, one of the public hearings.
Okay, great. Which one do you think you would go?
I'm closer to Kabeha.
Okay, okay. Good, good to know.
When is the date, when is the date actually?
Uh, nineteenth of, nineteenth of November, yeah, I think it's a Sunday, let me just double check.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, it's a Sunday, it's a Sunday, um. Uh. And then, and then, uh, yeah, Northern Cape people, anyone wanting to go? Kimberley, Kuruman, the Ard and Uppington. Kimberley on the second of November, Kuruman on the third of November, the Ard on the fourth of November, and on the fifth of November. Uh. Okay, I see in the chats, Sophia, you're keen. Uh. Okay, so I think moving forward, what, what, what we can do is I'm gonna be sharing this presentation uh, with all of you, um, over, over email and WhatsApp. Um, and then, uh, we will get in touch with you, um, over the course of the next few days, well, uh, next week, uh, about the support for how to go about the support for, for, um, for attending the public hearings, in particular those who are attending from the Northern Cape. We need to, we need to sort that out soon, because of course, if we, if there needs to be a, an advance that needs to be sent to you for public trans, I mean, for transport, then, uh, that needs to, to happen quite soon, so, um, yeah. We'll, we'll communicate more on that in the WhatsApp group. Um, uh, but yeah, other than that, Eugene, I see your, your mi- microphone is unmuted. Do you want to come in? Eugene?
No, I'm covered. I don't know why, uh, my apologies, I'm covered.
Okay, no, no problem, no problem. Okay, well, um, thanks everyone for, for attending and for your, um, for your engagement, uh, and, um, I am looking forward to, to hearing what you all think of the public, the public hearings. Uh, and, um, we'll be in touch about that.